Matt, are you ready back there? Okay. He's ready.
Are we going?
Yep.
We're on?
We're over.
Okay. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for coming tonight.
Yeah, different man.
Different man, yeah. Um, welcome to this regular meeting of the Oakmuss Board of Education, held in public for the purpose of conducting the business of the school board. Secretary Phelps, will you call the role, please?
Tom Bumpa, here. Katie Kavanaugh.
Here.
Shulon Doxy.
Here.
Mary Javara.
Here.
Melanie Lynn.
Here.
Jamie Taylor.
Here.
And I am here.
Wonderful. Everyone is present tonight. There are two opportunities for public comment. Citizens who wish to address agenda or non-agenda items will have an opportunity at the beginning of the meeting as well as near the end of the meeting. In-person individuals who wish to address the board must complete a blue form located with the agendas near the room's entrance and present it to the board secretary prior to the start of the agenda item. Virtual participants must submit their name and address in a message through the chat box located in Zoom's meeting controls prior to the start of the agenda item. At the appropriate point in the agenda, the board president will call upon individuals who have submitted a blue card or a chat message, and that individual's microphone will be unmuted for their comments. First up tonight, we have a discussion move forward regarding the bond update. Superintendent Hood, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, thank you. Good evening, members of the Oakmuss community and our trustees. Uh, this evening, we have our bond team here again to give a bond program update. So we're making some exciting progress. And want to make sure the board and community are up to date. So our partners from Crispin, Veritas, and Tower Pinkster are here. So, um, we'll turn it over to Hels and to start. Thank you.
Jump right in and we have line updates and construction updates for you this evening. No board action, so just updates on a number of different projects. Yeah. So bid package eight. So this is the first time we are coming to you with bid package eight information. So this is a project that we intend to start next summer at the high school and addresses both the high school music and expansion and kitchen improvements. So here, can you see the normal timeline? And I think you can go to the next page, John.
Yep.
And I'll let Ed, you want to talk?
Sure. Give you a general overview of what, what we're doing with the design. So this is a 3D model of the existing buildings, you can see. Uh, this is the addition that we're doing at the music, uh, musically. Uh, we're adding on, um, storage and music storage and, um, practice rooms, improving that. Uh, the, the music rooms are going to stay. I guess we can go to the next slide, actually.
Sure.
Yep. Um, so the music rooms are going to stay the same that they are now, the same size. We're going to improve, uh, some of the AV in those rooms. Uh, but you can see here, we've got, uh, storage for orchestra and standard and storage here. So we're going to move a lot of the items that are sitting inside those rooms now out of those rooms into expanded storage. And in addition, we've got a couple of practice rooms on either side and are expanding the, uh, the access and exit paths beyond that. Uh, this is all existing space here. We're just reconfiguring that again to make it more efficient. Um, with the students arriving in the morning, dropping their instruments off and, uh, being able to access into the rooms from that area. And this is just showing some of the kitchen improvements. So in, in addition to that, we're, we're improving the flow and, and of the students coming in and being able, able to, uh, access the servery. Um, so really all new equipment improvements here and looking at how the students are going to flow in and flow out and improve that process. And then, uh, a lot of this is existing equipment that you see here, but we are doing improvements back, uh, in, in the storage area and freezer and cooler. Uh, again, make that whole area more efficient, um, as we move. And then I think what you don't see, uh, we're, we're working on the, uh, the greenhouse. We're going to improve. There's some masonry pair repairs. We're doing it below the greenhouse. And we're, uh, replacing some doors and repairing some doors around the whole, whole area as well.
Some bathrooms, please.
Oh yeah, that's right. And, and the bathrooms, the public bathrooms that are near the gym and the auditorium are going to get all refinished. Oh, sorry.
Yeah, and Shane can talk about both big package four, which are the high, high school and Hyawatha vestibules that have been recently completed um, as well as some of the Chippewa updates that you just saw.
Well, and Central Montessori, can't forget them.
Yep, yep. So, uh, Hyawatha, um, we're, we're all wrapped up there. Uh, there's a few punch list items, but they're actually moved in and operating in, in the office space now. So great news for, for Hyawatha. Um, at the high school, we're actually walking space tomorrow, right? To finalize our punch list and plan a movement date. Uh, so that's for both of the offices at the Hyawatha and High School. Uh, here at Central Montessori, uh, we are all wrapped up except for a little bit of painting and electrical work, uh, for the before and after after school, uh, room upstairs. Um, we just got to tie in some duck. That's, that's the duck work. We're just, we're wrapping that up on the electrical and painting should be done. Painter is going to be here this Friday when school's out.
Shane, can you speak to the pool and HVAC when that work's going to be done at the high school, please?
So the pool pack, um, we're, we're scheduling for after the season. So we'll start it in March 15th. Uh, and then I believe is a 60-day turnaround. 12 weeks.
It's not 60 days.
12 weeks. I can't remember the schedule.
I think it is. I think it's March to June.
Okay, 12-week turnaround.
And that was approved as part of big pack four as well. So that's still, I'm going.
Yep. So we, we strip the trusses and repaint and then replace mechanical equipment for the pool.
It should be some, yeah, those are.
Here's our pictures for Hyawatha. This is the front office and this is one of the, there's three bathrooms. It's one of the bathrooms all finished out. And this is the high school front office and then this is the workroom and the bathroom for the teachers. Turned out really nice. And then you can see our duck work is just needs to get painted upstairs. Uh, so this is the RTU, the rooftop unit that we did, the crane left. Um, if anybody saw that a few weekends ago, we had a crane on site. So that was awesome success. And two big package three. Since a new Chippewa, uh, and you saw from our walk earlier, um, we are in full construction of putting foundations in, uh, wrapping those up and then going up with our CMU masonry, uh, uh, load bearing walls in the new gym, uh, and the mechanical yard and, and the weight room. Here's our pictures. Look familiar?
Make sure community is aware of the great work going on.
This is the tunnels, uh, within the existing space that were filled with geofon and it won't pour concrete. Or plan, site plan?
Yeah, this is a site plan that will be found on the bond website and just gives people good. This was a request from the board and great perspective. I'm trying to understand where the new versus the existing are. So this has been a great tool for all of us.
Yeah. So the existing's in that dark outline, uh, that the community can see. And then that dark blue is the new newest construction on Chippewa and the red will be the new construction on Kennewa. And then what you see in the light blue is what we're currently using for Chippewa Middle School and will use for Cornell Elementary in a year and a half.
And the sections in here, the blue and the red are, will be renovated and reused in the new facility.
New facility, yep. And that was one of the number one questions we're getting from the community is they want to know where it's going on the site. So this should give you a bird's eye overhead view of where things will go on the site. Uh, for a good, um, way to orient yourself, these are the tennis courts that we just, uh, redid in the 2019 bond. And those are staying. So if you're familiar with those tennis courts, where you'll kind of see where the new building is positioned.
I want to speak for Shannon, but this is her great document that the communications team put together to just ta-talk about some of the bond milestones that, you know, we're working through and toward, but big picture of when you can anticipate construction happening for the three big rocks. Chippewa, Cornell, and Kennewa, and as well as when students will plan to move in.
And that was thanks to the comms team, Shannon and Michaela for that. You know, the other question was parents like, I just want to find out when those schools are going to be online. There's so much information on the website. We can't just find those things. So we created this, uh, to be really accessible for the community. So you could see when, when's Chippewa coming online? When's the temporary Cornell? When's the new Cornell and when's the new Kennewa? Just to really bring it to the forefront.
And the Oakmussbond.net, it's a great opportunity to, to John's point, to find additional information and soon we'll have some, um, time lapse videos to share with, from the Chippewa site, once those, once we have enough to show.
Yes, it's too quick right now. So we blank.
One and a half seconds is too, too short. So our future board agendas, we will be back in November to review the furniture process and the first quote for furniture, uh, scope that we intend to purchase for installation next summer. Um, and then we'll request that you, uh, act on that in December and approve that quote and then we'll get that moving. And then we'll be back, um, in January for the approved bids for the rest of Chippewa, which will be the large big package for the new Chippewa build. So that'll be a big date for this bond program. Um, and then we'll be back in, in March for the, um, approve the bids for the high school work that we just reviewed for the high school, the music and kitchen improvements.
And just to remind our trustees that January 6th meeting is the special board meeting, um, to make sure our timeline is met for, uh, Crispin and Tower. If you recall, they asked for a special boarding in January. We'll get the information to you prior. Um, so that'll be a smaller agenda with just that board action to look at the bid pack three C, uh, approval at that meeting.
Yep.
I do want to put into the space before questions, just again, a thanks to our team, uh, when you're looking at the music redesign and the cafeteria redesign, music staff heavily involved in that process. I think I saw them three or four times at least in the meetings, giving feedback and revising and giving feedback. So that design, uh, is designed by those using those spaces. So thank you to the team for incorporating all that feedback. Uh, and same with our, uh, kitchen spaces that we incorporated that with our, um, kitchen management and administrative team, and then our, our, our workers as well to really utilize that space in a more efficient, effective way. So you know, kudos, uh, to the team for bringing in those that are going to be working on this at, at the, you know.
Absolutely. Key stakeholders have been a part of this bond program and will continue to be because that's how we provide tower the information they need to design the types of spaces you guys need.
Any questions? Yes, Tracy Phelps.
Just really quick, um, um, love all the new stuff and the new, um, one thing I note that I like that I've seen throughout is our consistent design language in all the new offices, which will be awesome. We'll go to a point where all of our offices will have a consistent look and feel, which I think is really cool. Um, on that kind of consistency piece, I just wouldn't want to touch on big pack eight. I see it looks like it's the same brick as the high school. The new addition can, can you, can you expect that to be the same throughout?
That is, that is the intent.
Okay.
Um, anytime you do an addition and, and you don't have brick from the same era, it, it could, you try to match it as, as closely as possible, but you don't always find a perfect match, but that's the intent. We're going to try to match it.
Perfect. And then I know you said next summer, rough timeline and how long that process and big packet will take.
Yeah.
Construction process?
Yeah, the construction is scheduled for one year.
For one year. Okay. And will the, and will our music students still be able to use the current music rooms while that's happening?
That's the plan.
Awesome. Great. Thank you.
While you're right at that picture, um, can you give me a perspective of where, what is new there? I see the, just that area. Okay.
Then the interiors, um.
And then the interiors being renovated.
Renovated, redesigned.
Okay. All right. That was not clear. I just don't have a picture of where I am.
Yeah.
In the, okay, very good.
If you go back to the floor plan, that, that area that you see here is, is this area here.
Yeah. Okay.
The existing wall is right, right on the, yeah.
That is very helpful. Okay.
And then we're going to renovate it all.
And then.
More efficient.
This all gets renovated and this all becomes, um, storage for band uniforms. So there is a tremendous amount of storage that we are providing in the bands and end of it, uh, school instruments and personal instruments can be stored. And that's why we saw the music teacher so much because trying to coordinate the number of blockers you need for each instrument was. Howard did a good job looking through that.
Perfect. Thank you for that.
Any other questions?
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Up next, we have a presentation, um, with Assistant Superintendent Stacy Bailey and the DEI Director, uh, Dr. Sli regarding some assessment data.
My usual spot over here. So, um, so we have our fall data. And so as you might remember in the fall, uh, we're going to be looking at our spring data to look at our achievement data from the spring and our state assessments. And then we'll look at, um, our goals that we had established for the spring to determine if we met those goals and what our goals are for this year as well.
Working. Now go on one sec. User error. I'm sure. There we go.
So as we had, um, last year, we really want to, um, have more data to look at this initiative. And our theory is that we're tracking really our students' growth, academic growth throughout the year using NWEA. So those are the three touch points during the year. And the more that we have students making and exceeding their expected growth, we anticipate that we will see that increase in proficiency. So we have one year behind us and I don't think with one year, we yet have enough data to say if this is accurate. So this year, uh, when we go through some of our goals and what we met and we maybe were close on in the spring, I think it will kind of start showing some of our patterns emerging on this piece. As a reminder, NWEA, this is our third year that we're doing it. Last year, we added ninth grade students and this year we're adding our 10th grade students for math and ELA to have a data point, um, on a standardized assessment for the MTSS process at the high school. So again, this shows those, um, the academic pieces and Dr. Sli is here. Uh, she and I work very closely in all of these data pieces as well as, um, Dr. Heather Preco or Director Heather Preco. Um, she couldn't be here tonight, but the three of us are really the three that are leading our MTSS district committee. And we're the three that are really looking from each of our different advantage points at this data regularly. Um, so we have our fall, winter and spring data. So today we'll be talking about where we were in the spring and setting our goals for, um, the remainder of the year. So just as a reminder, what we're going to start with is our achievement data. So our achievement data is our state assessments in the spring. So M step and it's looking, so fourth grade M step is testing our fourth grade students on fourth grade state standards to say, how well did you learn this content based on your grade level? That's what it's testing, just that achievement on that. Our NWEA test is different and we'll talk about that. Um, and so we're going to be talking about the M step for this and we'll also have some of our data for the PSAT and the SAT. Okay. So the beginning of this graph is a little wonky and I'm not sure what that's representing, but this is data from our new tool, Munetrix. So you might remember that I was saying we were getting a new tool last year and it has increased capabilities for our state assessment data. And it's developing increased capabilities for NWEA. So you'll notice that there, we're missing some of the data pieces you were used to before. So we'll talk about that because they're working on that. Um, so this is overall, so I wanted to start very big picture. The green on the top represents Oakmuss Public Schools. So this is if we're comparing our district to our county, the central region in Michigan. So kind of like a big far out picture of where we are. We talk in the specifics because we are just looking at how do we continue increasing ours. But I wanted you and the community to still have a frame of reference that Oakmuss Public Schools is doing very well when we're looking at our proficiency levels. So while a lot of the presentations talk about continued growth and improvement, we still will always strive for that. But in comparison, we have a lot to be proud of and our students and our families and our teachers are working hard each and every day. So I wanted to make sure to bring that into the conversation to set a context before we kind of get into the more of the nitty gritty of it. So this is our ELA. So you can see that, um, we had a slight decrease. We went up and then we had a slight decrease. Um, we're still doing some of that rebounding out of COVID. And I would like to say that after this year, things will be looking different. But the babies we have coming to us in kindergarten, they're our COVID babies. And so just a lot of things that happen to all of us in our communities, we're still going to see those impacts. So I don't want us, even though we feel like we're past that, I want us to kind of just know, we're still seeing, um, students that have greater level of needs, both in academics and behavior and social emotional, and we'll continue meeting all of those needs for our students. When we look at math, we can see that again, Oakens Public Schools is, um, higher than our state and our local region. And you can see that we had that slight increase between last year and this year. So for our overall proficiency, which is a great success. Um, and I think when we kind of get into the data a little bit more, we can see that there's not any clear trends. We have some increases in some areas and some decreases over the last uh, two or three years. So I can't say definitely we're on the upswing and everything, but there are some areas we definitely are on that upswing for. So this is kind of an overall snapshot of where have we been for the last 10 years? So you'll notice that we have a couple of science years missing there. You might remember that was when, um, we are still working on finalizing our science standards. And so the M step wasn't developed at that time. So those are some of the gaps in it. Um, so you can just see kind of over the last 10 years as a district, where have we been? Okay. I know this is like a lot of different moving parts. Um, so this is a breakdown on our proficiency for ELA for all of our students. Again, um, students in grades three through seven take the M step ELA and the M step for math. When we get into social studies and science, it's our fifth, eighth and 11th grade students taking that assessment. So what I want you to notice for the next few graphs is where our constant is the all students. So we're not comparing one demographic against another non-demographic or another area. So the all students is in the blue here. And so that's kind of when we look at our data, where are we performing in some different areas over the next few slides in comparison to all of our students? So you can see that there are some gaps in this data too. So you'll notice like the bottom two, we see some holes in that from 2020, 2021. So you might remember that that was the year that the M step was optional. And so that meant that it was not required for all students to take it. So those two demographic groups did not have enough students that took it for it to be reported out on. And so that's why you notice that we have that, um, that gap in that. Sometimes that might come up when I talk about different things and I'll say we might have our, um, Pacific Islanders that we don't have enough in to be able to report out on that accurately. This is looking at the same thing, but for math. And so we still see that gap in there. And then we see that blue line, um, that's right here. We noticed we had a positive and a negative. When we look at the end of our data from last year, we see that, um, our Hispanic students made a big gain. But then we see that our black or African-American students took, um, a decrease in their scores. So both things for us to dig into deeper, especially at building levels to look at what was happening and how are we meeting? What did we do really well that met students' needs? And is there anything that needs to be adjusted so that we can better meet all students' needs? So I thought this, this slide looks like two sets of parallel lines. And that's problem because over the last 10 years, there hasn't been necessarily any significant both increases or decreases in that opportunity gap that exists between our, all of our students, which represents the blue line and our students that are economically disadvantaged. So I think seeing this and really just seeing that parallel line was striking. And it looks, obviously we've been focusing on this, but there's a lot more work to be done with this. Um, and so you can see slight, I say very slight increases in the green over the last year. So, um, these were students that were targeted by some of our ESSR funds. So some of the after-school tutoring and our summer programs. Um, but we still are just seeing a very, very slight impact on that. And then we have our multilingual learners. So I can't remember if I mentioned this in the spring or not. Um, we used to call them our ELS, our English language learners. Um, the new term is multilingual learners, which is more asset-based. And rather than somebody who needs to learn English, really trying to emphasize that they already know many of our students, one or many other languages, and they're in the process of learning English with us, but they're multilingual learners. And so as an aside, our multilingual teachers and some of our world language teachers have actually formed a committee and we're thinking about how can we really start merging the ideas of both of those programs of learning language throughout the district. So more to come on that. Um, so when we're looking at our multilingual students, we can see for math in, um, 2020, 2021, we kind of, we did it. We crossed over. And then we see that we had that increase again, um, coming back after COVID. Uh, you can also see that for ELA, from where we were to where we are now, we're making small gains, but not necessarily closing what we want to, um, with that, uh, opportunity for all students. So this is kind of the big picture summary. So this is like a lot of numbers. I get that. Um, so what we're attempting to show each year is what were we actually at before? What was our goal? Did we make it or not? And then what's our new goal? So if we look at proficiency in ELA, in spring of 22, 23, we had 65% and we had a 3% increase. We wanted to increase 3% for all of our proficiency levels. And you can see that our actual was below that. We were at 63.8%. So our goal is 66.8% for this year. So taking our actual and increasing that. So you can see that for math. So you can see that for math and ELA, well, for math, you can see that we did increase from where we were last year. By 0.5%, but we did not meet our goal. The good news is, is that we knocked our goals out of the park for science and social studies. So we had a 3% increase and we, we did close to a 9% increase for science. And then we had, um, over 6% for social studies. So you might remember that those were areas that we saw little movement on. I remember like five years ago, we talked about it. We weren't necessarily seeing that. Those two areas have had updated curriculums and an upgrade, increased, um, collaboration with our teachers. So. That's very exciting to see those increases. Then on the right-hand side, we have our PSAT and our SAT data. So students take the PSAT. Um, in eighth grade and then they do it ninth and 10th grade, but it's not scored or released out. And then they do the SAT in 11th grade. So you can see for ELA, um, we almost, we were 0.4% off. We were so close to meeting our goal. But our proficiency for that is very high. And so while we did set that 3% increase in that, the committee talked about at what point do we think we're, you know. How, is 3% always going to make sense when we get into the, um, 85% and above proficiency? Is that what we want to measure for proficiency, not growth? That's different. Um, and then you can see that we did not meet our goal for proficiency in math on the SAT or PSAT. But again, we're having that increased goal. So this is a lot of data, but I want to bring it back to, it's not just the data, it's the conversations around that. So this is data that we have a 45 staff MTSS district committee. And we, as people from all over the district are reviewing this and talking about this and what does this mean? And how are we going to check what we're doing? Is it working? These are the same conversations happening at all of our building levels. And so we're all looking at that data from different vantage points and then diving in deeper to that. So while this is a big broad view, I want you to know that these are the conversations being had in all of our buildings. Every time you see me up here, know that it's already been happening in the buildings there too. And so we're using this data to drive our decisions at that local level for classroom instruction and building programming. Okay, so now that I've done all my talking, yes, all right.
She hasn't done all of her talking. Um, so. What Mrs. Bailey was talking about was the, I don't, if, if you recall from, I believe last year, the year before, we talked about some of that street data. There's a book. Um, what we've been talking about is that satellite data that's very far removed from individual students. Like it gives us an idea of how kids are doing, but it's just that one point in time. So, um, and, and that is a lot of the data we look at, at that district-wide committee. We do look at some of the, the closer level data at those district meetings, but. Um, I would say that this growth data that I'm going to talk about is, is more of what our building teams are, are looking at closely because it gets us, it's that. Um, map level data, which gives us a closer view. Like we can pinpoint that down to. Groups within our school, um, groups within a classroom, individual students, uh, so that, that's what this growth data will give us with the NWEA. Um, so just a reminder, projected growth, um, it's basically the progress a student makes over a period of time. Uh, the focus is on that trajectory of learning, not just that one single point. And it really allows us to determine whether students are making sufficient progress, um, regardless of where they start. And so I think about when Mrs. Bailey was, uh, you know, like if we decided we were going to run a marathon. We're, we're starting from very different points. She actually runs. I do not. So I, I do have faith that we could both be successful at a marathon, but it, it would, I would be starting from a very different point. And it, it would not be pretty, but we would both get there. The goal does not change. Um, we're both running a marathon and, and that's what our students are doing. We're not changing that target level. We're just, they're growing into that target in a different way. So we use this data, uh, to set learning goals for students and groups of students. Um, we monitor their progress. And it helps us identify some of those strengths that our students have that we can build on and some of the gaps that we need to fill. Did you skip my beautiful picture?
Did I? There we go, sorry.
Oh, and I changed it. Oh, I updated this. I, I was bothered by the, the difference in the. Lines. It's okay. I'm going to get, we're going to get past it. Uh, just, you know, so these, these two students, you third graders. Um, they're, they're, they're both growing, right? This blue line. Uh, but if the goal's up here. This kid is going to get there pretty easily. This kid right here is going to need some interventions and supports to get to that same goal. Now we can go to the boring number slide. Um, yeah, I don't have all the pretty graphs, but, uh, this is just the, some of the data we've been looking at. As, as Mrs. Bailey said, we don't have lots and lots of years of this. Um, so we're just getting started in this process. This was, uh, fall to spring when we first started taking, um, both literacy and math. Um, with the NWEA grades three through, no. Okay. I was thinking of the BASK, which is coming soon. Um, K through nine and we're adding 10th grade as Mrs. Bailey said. So this is where we started. Um, our goal was a 10% increase. And we did exceed that, um, in fall, fall and spring last year. Um, same with math, huge jump. Uh, so our committee decided we would. That we thought an eight, this was, uh, you can do the math. I think it was about, oh, I wrote down, about a 10% increase. 13, 13%. So we thought a 8% increase as a goal for this coming year would be. Um, attainable and hopefully we will exceed that in both content areas. And with that being our hypothesis is if our students are showing growth. They're going to show better achievement levels on our, uh, yearly state testing. And this is a little hard to read, given the, the setup here. Um, but as Mrs. Bailey said, we are missing some of our data points because we switched over from.
IDEX.
IDEX to Munetrix. Um, but we see similar, if you remember, some of the graphs from the achievement data, we see some similar patterns here where. We've got the average and we have some subgroups that are, um, a little bit below that. And some that are higher. Was there anything else I needed to say about this one?
I just, I think the most important thing to think about our growth is that it's taking students from where they are. And then they have a target based on that. So let's say we have a student that is already in the 85th percentile. They're doing very well. They're still going to have an expected growth target, just the same as if a student is maybe struggling in the 25th percentile. So it's really about the differentiation, which our teachers are working so diligently on every day. Because it's trying to think about how do we make sure that we're meeting students that need additional support? But then students who already have that mastery level, how do we push them to grow even more? Um, and it's a challenge and in Oakhamus, we have, we have a lot of students that are that whole range. And so that's the work before us, which is why we had originally switched to NWEA. To make sure that we were really ensuring that all students, no matter where they fall in that proficiency level. Are making that expected growth for the year.
Yes, and, um, the, the, the NWA is a nice tool in that. Um, it, it does some of the work of differentiating for us. In fact, it, it'll, it'll pinpoint some very specific places within the curriculum. That our teachers can focus on to help bridge some of those gaps. Moving on to social and emotional learning, um, this is from our screener, which is the BASK. Three best. That's, it's a, it's a lot of letters. Um, but it's, it's where we ask students a series of, I think it's 28 questions. Um, that get at some of the internalizing and externalizing factors in their life. Um. Internalizing like. I, I'm lonely. I don't have a lot of friends, that kind of thing. And then externalizing would be like. Uh, things that we can see. Um. I, I've stolen something from my friend or I've hit, hit someone, that kind of thing. So that, that would be like the, we're trying to. Get an idea of how students are doing, um, both internally and externally. And in those internal factors are sometimes like, I don't feel like I have a lot of friends. I don't feel like I belong. Um, they're not always evident to us. So this screener, um. Can help us pinpoint kids who might be at risk that we wouldn't otherwise notice or, um, know from just looking at them. And I just want to. Ignore this one, uh, at the bottom. It seems, uh, I was digging into the data today. They, there's some misidentification of students. It looks like. It's just the race component that. It's, this is saying that we have more than half of our students who are identified as two or more races. Um, but that's not accurate. And I went in and looked at some of the data. Everything else seemed to be tracking. It was just that race field. So we're going to. Coming soon, we'll give you some updated information, um, after we figure out what that glitch is. Um, I'm, I'm confident these other two are, um, accurate though, um, which shows that. The vast majority of our kids are kind of in that normal typical range of social and emotional being. Um, and we don't necessarily need to intervene with them. But if they're showing an elevated or an extremely elevated risk, our, our counselors, our social workers, our school psychs have. A system in which they're checking in on those students. Um, and we're also using the data, more importantly, I think to, to. Um, supplement some of our programming, like small groups for students, um, to learn different skills. Um, what, what sorts of things do we need to include in some of our SEL curriculum? Or supplement with our SEL curriculum to make, make sure that we're, we're trying to get everybody in the green. Um, and this is for grades three through 12. And, uh, I could break it down by grade, but just so you know, all of the grades, it's 80% or higher. Who, with kids who are in that green. So it's looking good. It's mostly like, I want to say we're around 83, 84 for most grade levels.
We both have, oh, yes. So I know that we're, we're running long. Um, so these were some of the initiatives we've talked about in the past. So I was just going to kind of run through and give you some brief examples of how we know that these have worked or are working. So for our students, the Wolf Pack and New Furniture, both are increasing student engagement in the classroom. Going to give you a quick little story, a nugget about the Wolf Pack. We had a student at one of our elementaries that was having a really hard time entering the building, didn't want to come in, didn't want to go to school. The dog met the student every day. The student started coming in, started going into class, started staying in class, started staying the whole day. And now is at school all day long. Um, so that's just one example of, I could tell you that for probably every dog at every building. Um, but the impact is that, uh. What you see and experience when the students are seeing them and how that is supporting them to access the learning. Um, social studies and science, we talked about that. We have increased M step scores. And I think that's really a lot to the, the credit of our teachers and having updated materials that are aligned. Uh, for our educators, we continue having OG and letters training. That's have increased literacy instructional best practices, small group instruction that's happening. At our Kennewah Building 5-6, we are doing a lot of learning to get towards standard-based grading practices. So we're having increased alignment to the curriculum and the standards, um, which is amazing. For our multilingual, we've hired an additional teacher for this year. Uh, we have our department learning day. So that's at a lot of our secondary buildings. For increased collaboration, that alignment, how do we know that this English 10 class is similar to this English 10 class? Is similar to this English 10 class, part of that guaranteed and viable curriculum. Um, and then we have our committees, the MTSS committee, looking at our overall systems and processes. Our computer science committee, I don't know if we talked about that last year. We're on our second year of that. They're really coming up with K-12 alignment around our computer science standards and developing common goals. And then we have our OHS testing center, which was launched this year. So students can make up assignments, um. More on demand. They don't have to wait until one of those, um, a Thursday so that they can do that. And I know within the first. Few weeks it was utilized by hundreds of students. Then to the next one.
Oh. Yes, I would love to do this. Uh, so current and continued supports. Um, and initiatives include, uh, our, for students, the universal accommodations. Um, in, in all of our schools, we have instituted that. And actually heard some anecdotally good things about that. Um, our K4 SEL curriculum, you will be hearing more, um, specifics about. Uh, that as we're rolling it out and we're going to be working with the, the, um, publisher of that program. And their research team to make sure that we're really evaluating the, the efficacy of that program. As, uh, Mrs. Bailey mentioned before, after-school tutoring, summer school. Um, and tutoring to really target some of our, our groups who are, um. A little bit behind in the opportunity gap. Uh, for educators, as mentioned before, we're really hitting literacy hard. Um, multilingual learning is, is also a focus. Reviewing our curriculum, specifically social studies, but we're also looking at some of our multilingual curriculum. Um, five, the fifth and sixth building is moving to standard grade spading, grading. Um, and then we talked about the MTSS. Really focusing on vertical alignment, et cetera. I know I can read this, but I'm going to talk about. The exciting things I have in my notes. Um, I think a, a huge component of us being engaging for students. And engaging for our community are some of the extra things that we're adding in to really help. Um, with a sense of belonging, a sense of connection with our community. So just three things I wanted to mention. Um, the first is that we received a grant from the Native American Heritage Foundation. Um, in which we're partnering with Oakhamus to provide third grade lessons. Um, which we did, we piloted a few years ago, but now, um, we're, we're going to start institutionalizing that practice. Um, I, hopefully in years going forward. So that's pretty exciting. Um, we are working with the Harvard Kennedy School Government Performance Lab, who's working with. The Michigan Department of Health and Human Services to increase our. Um, and improve our referral systems. We're going to really be looking at that BASK SEL data. Um, and, and doing that and also partnering with, uh, local districts and local community organizations to have better. Mental health supports for our kids. And the third is, uh, we're working with MSU School of Education professors. Um, and providing our teachers some like really in-depth learning on the youth participatory action research model. Um, which is very cool, which allows our students to investigate things of importance to them that make an impact on the community. So I think, you know, we've got all the, all these things that we are doing internally, but then starting to work with our external partners is only going to make. All of these things stronger and better and, um, increase just, uh. The, the engagement across the board.
Now, and I added a new slide, but I don't, it's not the updated one on here. I just wanted to share that, um, the next presentation you'll see in November is going to be from. Um, some of the district MTSS committee. So they're going to talk about what data they're reviewing and that. That's, that's a little garring. But they'll be talking about how they looked at the practice profile review to set their goals, which are really the goals that we have moving forward from a systems level. Um, so that's coming up.
Thank you. Do we have any questions?
Oh, go ahead.
Trusty Daxi, I, I always go first.
I will. Will you speak, yeah. As you were, uh, talking about the growth, uh, metrics. You continue to talk about, uh, differentiation. And I'm trying to be, to put myself in the place of a teacher who has to. Um. To, who is challenged with these multiple facets of differentiation. So what are we, how are we supporting the faculty and staff in helping with this differentiation? It seems like we should be talking about differentiation supports and all. And maybe that's baked into some of your training or will you speak to what, how we're supporting the faculty? In being able to meet our students' needs?
Yes, it is, it is a big, big challenge and our teachers step up and do an amazing job every day. Our teachers and all of our support staff. Um, so when we talk about literacy training, we're talking about. How do we develop the skills and the scope and sequence so that when we have the data on students, we know where to support them with? A lot of it is teacher collaboration. So when we're thinking about, um, the magnitude of the work, none of us can do this alone. And so it's trying to carve out more time for educators to meet together, which is difficult. Um, but our secondary teachers have really been focusing on having those department meetings to look at what they're doing. And develop common resources that they can all have. Look at what they're doing and develop common resources that they can all have and use. So I would say a lot of professional development, a lot of training, developing common materials, looking at different things that might be used to supplement that. But I wouldn't say that we've, we've come to a place where we have everything figured out and talking with colleagues around the state. I don't think anyone has. The challenges post-COVID are continuing and it's, it's hard because it's a lot of work and it's a lot of energy. And so making sure that our educators have the resources that they need before them, making sure that they have time to spend with colleagues. Our instructional coaches are crucial in this work. Our instructional coaches, we have one in every building and they're. Working side by side with our teachers to go through lessons, to go through what support do you need and make sure that they have what they need when they need it for our students. But I would say that that's our ongoing work and differentiation is embedded into everything that we do moving forward because. We know we're never going to have a group of students at the same level, needing the same support within a classroom, whether it's a second-grade classroom or an eleventh-grade classroom.
So I'm gonna follow up, if you don't, don't mind. How are we monitoring to make sure that. You know, teacher A is not just being overwhelmed with. The challenges of differentiation. I can just imagine that that is significant.
So it's a lot of our, our data meetings that happen at the building. So the data meetings are the whole grade level team coming together with the coach and the principal. And looking at the data and developing what is that plan? And so then you. Practice the plan and you have the support from the coaches and we have support staff and aides. And then we come back in in the winter to check in on that. So in between that, we have our principals checking in with teachers, we have mentor teachers for our teachers. We have our instructional coaches. We, we do all that we can to make sure that no one feels like that island. I remember feeling like that island as a teacher and it's the worst.
I can only imagine. So thank you for, for speaking to that. Thank you.
Trusty Daxi?
Yes, thank you for the presentation. When you were going over the achievement goals. One, you answered a lot of questions that I had just in your presentation, so thank you. I think I heard you say there was a goal of three percent. So was there any discussion? I understand having the goal of the three percent increase, but that means a couple of our areas like. Around the PSAT, SAT, and I think the ELA, that means twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five is lower than our previous goal. Even though we didn't meet it, like, did the team have any discussion? Should we continue with the previous goal if it was higher? Can you speak to that a little?
Yeah, so it's been this group, this is our second year of setting these goals. And so. We really want to make sure that as a district, we're setting goals that are stretching us, but that we also feel that are attainable. So what we have set as these goals for the three percent might be slightly lower. Than what a building goal is. So the building's looking at their data to set that goal. Our biggest thing is we really want to make sure that we have an attainable goal that we can reach and then continue climbing higher. And so when we reflected on this to say, well, we didn't meet it this year, they talked about, do we change it to what that is and just retain that? But then we talked about the reason that that goal was originally created was to be that three percent increase. So I think this year will be really telling to see what the data is and do we stay with that pattern for us to think about what our, you know, what that goal is? Or do we start doing more of what we do? What we do with the student to say, our goal is going to be that eighty percent, and then we start doing eighty percent by. Twenty-thirty and then going backwards to say, so what's our increases? So more of that aim line approach. So this is our second year, so I think we're still, you know, working really diligently with that group to determine how do we make that accurate goal. So I think it's gonna be good conversation for the group this year.
Okay, great. And one last question. When you were going over the subgroup and you talked about the, there were some areas, you see some significant drops, particularly African-American students in the. Math proficiency and that the team will basically do a data dive. When will we hear more? Of your results from the data dive and, you know, looking into those, those subgroups who has significant drops?
Yeah, we're gonna be doing that with the MTSS committee, so that should be part of the information you see in the spring when they come back again to talk about that. And so a combination of. That with our leadership team and our building teams to bring back before the end of this year to say, what did we learn from that and what will we be doing differently?
Okay, thank you.
Trusty Taylor.
As always, thank you. I love data, so I, I don't mind all the graphs and all the numbers that. I do have a question. I'm pretty sure you answered it, but I just want to make sure that there's clarity. I noticed that there was not proficiency data for special education students with the estate assessment data. And then it was coming soon with like the NWEA growth. So. I'm assuming that's from the transition in the data. And is that something that we should expect to come in the spring or before that?
I'm hoping I can get it to you before that and kind of sneak it into the MTSS committee update. So that's my goal. I thought I had it this morning, but then it was not what I was needing, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Trusty Buffett.
Yeah, thank you again, really helpful. I had a question about MSEP. I know that's, the MSEP data was kind of across the whole district, right? And my, my question is, is were there any, especially with the, the achievement gaps that were illustrated there? Were there any levels that kind of stood out as doing a particularly good job of closing the achievement gaps? Anything we can learn from levels of data that might. Be applicable to other levels?
I think what we've seen over the last two years, we've seen increased levels of. Overall expected growth on NWEA and proficiency in seventh and eighth grade. And so just thinking about, you know, we, every time we're looking at data, we're always counting backwards, like, so if. Twenty-twenty-four, how many years ago was that? Where were they in this? Line. So that's what we've kind of been picking up on some of those pieces and looking at what they're doing at their building level. So just kind of more expected growth than we would normally see. And so I know that I've talked with a lot of those teachers already in that building. And they are like laser focused on data. They know their data inside and out. We are getting into the nitty-gritty on a lot of reports. And so I think it's as we continue building our skills overall as a district and as building teams. To really dive even deeper into this data to say, if we know these students are here, how do we target instruction specifically for those students? And this is our third year, so I anticipate we're gonna be getting there in a lot of grade levels, and I know a lot of teachers are doing that. I really think that that was what they got into first and maybe because it's seventh and eighth grade and so they're. I don't, I'm not sure why, but they've been diving in deep. So I think that once we start. Moving some of those practices. To the whole district, we're gonna start seeing that increase in growth and that increase in proficiency that we saw there.
Just to make sure I understand, so the achievement gaps at the seventh, eighth grade level were kind of smaller than those seen across the district. Okay, great. And same thing with the, the two sets of parallel lines. There's some levels or there's the same, the seventh, eighth grade, that's pretty.
That's pretty consistent, yeah.
I really appreciate you, again, thinking about, you know, differentiating instruction, both in day-to-day and then also some additional supports for kids, for students who are. Not meeting the, where we'd like them to be. Something I know will be helpful to us as, as a district is tying someone like. Dr. Sli mentioned that some students who needed some additional help were in the after-school tutoring programs and had some summer school support. So a question I guess I have. For the school board is, is so presumably not all the kids who needed it attended those things. So I'm curious as to. What have we learned about kids who do participate versus those who don't, who both, both sets of kids needed support? And that's the kind of thing that's really helpful to us as we think about budgeting and whatnot. So just to plant a seed for future kinds of. Data that we see.
Yes, and that, those intervention pieces are super important, but when we look at our overall data piece. Our focus has been on that tier-one piece of making sure all students get that, because. Anything that's after-school or in the summer, we don't have as much control over. So how do we make sure that our teachers have all the tools they need the day-to-day? So that we start having less students that need that second to third tier of that. So both good pieces that we're working to measure.
Trusty Taylor.
Something else for maybe some future discussion is. Universal accommodations. And I think it might be worth having, I don't know if it's an entire agenda item, but I know that I have had conversations with. With people, I mean, universal accommodations are fantastic, but I don't know that there's. An understanding of what that actually may mean. And the impact that maybe it has or doesn't have on like IEPs and other interventions and accommodations. That your student might have as a special education student. And I, it might, it might be worth having a presentation. Or a little further discussion at another meeting, kind of future meeting. I just wanted to throw that out there.
Oh, I just. Coming soon, I will be giving you an update around some of the equity work, but that was one thing that came up specifically at our district-wide committee meeting last week. So like top of mind and a real desire to do a lot of. Educational pieces for our community and, and specifically around grading and universal accommodation. So. Stay tuned for more.
Thank you.
So I just want to follow up on what you just said, Dr. Sli, because one of the reasons why we initiated the DEI work. What, almost twelve, thirteen years ago? Was to address. The gaps that we saw from an achievement standpoint. So I, I'm wondering. And I'm hope, maybe this is too, more to come in your more to come comment, but will we be able to. Identify or at least have a line of sight to the impact of our DEI work on. These numbers and trends or at least the SEL part of this, you know?
It, it, you were also reading my mind that, so it was the communication piece, like kind of the, the educational community, like. Awareness within the community about a bunch of different things and also the other big priority is gonna be a data dashboard, which I know we've talked about before. To really try to, to, to connect those dots and to, to pinpoint, are we having an impact or are we not having an impact? I will say that I, I see, I, I, we will see the majority once we get back to with more data as we get more into the, the MTSS. Committee work and root, making that just the routine of the district. I think we'll start to see more and more gains there as we dig deeper into that. Data, especially at a building level. So we'll make sure that rises to, to, you know, like, like this is, we'll show the public like what's, what's happening. And I, and I think intentionally. Finding ways to do that because it's not, it's not. There aren't direct lines sometimes, and it's, it's really difficult without a full-time. Data analysts on staff to really like pull all the numbers together, but that is something that we're, one of my priorities for the year personally. Is that forward-facing data information for everybody. To really highlight some of the, the impacts we're having or not having with, with some of the equity initiatives.
Yeah, I think that that's important to be able to show thy impact, because as we are. Considering priorities, it's good to be able to show thy impact. So, yeah.
And I mean, I would say that we have shown, I mean, I think we're getting there.
No, continual, it's a story. It's a continual, right.
And I do want to lean in on that because the team and I continue to have discussions on. The impact of our current structure or sometimes maybe the lack of impact of our current structure and the board has. Put a number of resources into trying to make this approach successful. And we know that we have finite resources, so we either need to make sure. The resources are allocated in a way that's being successful or look at reallocation before just asking for more necessarily. So that's a conversation we're actively having on our team to say, are we getting the outcomes we expect with the model we have? And if we're not, what might a different model look like? And who has a model that might have shown success and how's it different from ours and what might that look like? So those are active conversations we're having. Because the board has and will continue to prioritize the DEI work and the coaching and the helping with student outcomes. We just want to make sure that we have those. The right structure to get the outcomes that our community and board expect.
Thank you. Great presentation.
I have one question, but I'm sure it applies more to the next presentation with MTSS. I'm curious about the BASK assessment and the, the ten percenters. Do you see them in certain groups that are needing interventions academically as well? Or are they a mixed bag because they are pretty fifty-fifty on male and female?
Right.
But we don't know. Are those the kids that are also needing the, the, you know, greater supports or is it just spread all over? Do we have a way to identify them?
That is a great question and timely as well. I met this afternoon with our. With our representative from our MDHS or SS. Department of Health and Human Services in Harvard, who's helping us with that project. We're working with Kennewah and Chipewa. But one of the things that came up in that was what are we doing with it? Like, how do we? Really get into that data and they're gonna help us with that so we can answer questions like that. More specifically, I would say that just from talking to the, the, the counselors. They, they know, like, they generally, like, the kids who are kind of in that ten percent, they already are familiar with them. Whether or not, I don't know if they're having academic problems, but. It, counselors generally know most of those kids and are actively working with them. So, but the academic piece is something that the Harvard group is gonna help us with. As a result of our conversation today and, and moving forward. And I believe they're doing similar work with East Lansing, so. I think we'll learn a lot, so I guess, stay tuned, coming soon.
Yeah, I think it's great if we can use all these tools to connect the dots between who needs what and. You know, not just academically, not just in growth, not just in, you know, little pockets, but to bridge them all together.
And that was a focus of the conversation today was, it's not any one data piece. It's. You know, it's the screener, it's the test score, it's this grade, it's also the conversation with the, the student and their family. So.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, we look forward to seeing you next time. Thank you. Up next, we have the superintendent report and request. Superintendent Hood, that's you.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, as a point of order, I know our high school student is here and I know we've already been at the meeting for a little bit, so I don't know if we want to do that first or not.
I think she might like that.
Would that be okay? Okay, is that okay with the board? Okay.
Would you like to go first? All right.
I just want to say thank you for. Oh, wait, what? Okay, I just want to say thank you because learning about this is like, like really interesting and like fascinating to like learn what's going on in our community. So thank you for that. And also, we only have two things on our agenda today, which is miscellaneous in sports. Today was the first day, we tried out three lunches at Oakmoss High School, which is kind of a big deal, but it did go good. Because I definitely saw a change because I have a lunch and now we have with our new format in our like lunch tables and everything. Everybody can navigate easier and. I can like proudly say that no kid was standing in line at the end of lunchtime, which is good. And it's like very organized. The only concern is B lunch because B lunch goes in between fourth hour. So you go to fourth hour. And then you go to lunch and then go back to fourth hour. So this is just a little bit concerning for students that have it. Because like, they don't know what they'll do for like tests or like presentations. And I was wondering if you guys knew any. Like, any like modifications that's gonna happen for fourth hour lunch?
I do.
B lunch.
So we certainly understand that that split class is not ideal. And Dr. Kemble's looking at, working with the teachers to see if we can rotate that on a quarterly basis. So it's not always the same classes being impacted throughout the year. So I don't know where he's at with it, but he was, he said he had the idea of looking into it, so it's not always the same classes throughout the year that are hit. And more of kind of. More flexible scheduling, so you know, one quarter, one semester, I don't want to say semester, I think one quarter would be. A certain group of classes that it might, your schedule might switch and it's a different group that next quarter that has the B lunch. So. And always looking at that, I'm not sure where he is with it, but he, he recognizes that, so do the teachers. I know the teachers have done this. I know the teachers have done this before, so they're going to work with the students on it. Um in terms of how you do tasks, how you do presentations with that. So I trust them to bring you along there, but I know they're trying to find some creative decisions to share that experience.
Perfect. Yeah, um this Thursday we have Halloween, which we all know. And then we're um celebrating that with Spirit Week at our Oakmoss High School with like P J Day, Jersey Day. Class color in our costumes. We have no school that um that Friday, so November first due to professional development. Our quarter one, if time went by so fast, quarter one just ended last week Friday. We have our Oakmoss High School Theater that presents Harvey in the auditoriums, November eighth, ninth, and tenth. And then we have early decision for seniors to actually do also this Friday. And counselors and teachers are actually doing a wonderful job helping these very stressful seniors. And and they are giving a lot of support going through lunches and um there's like a set time and like. Area for um students to ask questions and like have their essays reviewed by our like English teachers. And then we have trunk or treat, which a lot of clubs are doing this year, and this is just a great way for. Um kids and families to come get it, get candy and for um. Our cars to get dressed up and for our us students to get dressed up. Next, we have sports. We have had um fall sports are coming to an end such as volleyball and cheer. And we've had a lot of senior nights in volleyball, cheer, and band. And our football, our final football game was last week Friday. Unfortunately, that was a loss, but we can successfully say that we've had two wins. And that's more than one, guys, so we're doing good.
More than zero.
Oh, yeah, more than zero. And varsity soccer made it to semifinals, but unfortunately lost, but they've had a pretty good season. That's all I have for you guys. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Can I have a question for Superintendent Hood based on you? The idea of moving the lunches, you know, one to the same group, are we, would they be mixed up again though? So the kids get settled on who they eat with and then.
I'm not sure. Yeah.
That would be a concern, I guess.
I think I've heard that um if we're in A lunch now, those sets of A lunch go to B lunch next quarter and then C lunch. So we'll all stay with like the same group, so it's not confusing.
Perfect, because I know that there are some stressed kids today.
Sure.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you so much.
Perfect. Thank you for having me.
Always lovely to have you. Okay, Superintendent Hood, your turn.
All right, um good evening again, everyone. Uh just a few things and then I really want to take some time um. To address some just reflections on the um Kinoa situation you may have heard of from. The last few weeks, so I would like to talk to that from about most of my super tense reports. We have a few things really quickly before that, so. Um let's see here. Um strategic planning proposal, I do have uh it shared between myself and trustee Buffett. Uh our hopes are to have some direction for strategic planning before winter break, so maybe we can do that this yet this spring. Um are there any other trustees that wanted to assist with reviewing that proposal? I wanted to make sure I just opened it up again to others.
Aren't we going to send it to the whole board?
I can certainly send the proposal to the whole of board, but I know a whole group can't meet to review the proposal with me and I just didn't know if.
Oh, no, no.
More than one.
For everyone to be able to read the.
Everyone will be able to read it, yeah.
Proposal, yeah.
Happy to do it with trustee Buffett, but I want to open up to others if anyone else wanted to put eyes on it as well. I see people avoiding eye contact.
Yeah.
We're doing, we're looking at a proposal now to see how might that look if we wanted to implement it this spring.
I would be happy to work with you all on that, long as we're going to be here.
Sure.
We can keep you on that way.
Thank you, trustee Lynn.
Can you help me understand what the difference is, what you're going to be doing here versus when we're sharing the proposal with everyone to review? Does that make sense? Because it sounds like you're going to share the report proposal with the entire board to look at, correct?
I'm going to share, but we're going to have a smaller group meet with someone from M A S B to answer questions, get some clarity on what that might look like.
Prior to potential implementation this spring. Oh, I think I just want to clear in what we're talking about.
The proposal you'll see is a document with a number on it of what they're going to, you know, charge us to help us with that process, but we want to meet with. And talk to M A S B about what does that look like in Oakmoss? And what can we expect, who's doing what um to that type of level? So then when we talk about it as a board, we can have a good cross section of people that are informed and can answer those questions.
Could I just suggest that you send it out and then at that point, if one more trustee?
Sure.
We could do one more of that.
Absolutely.
Um I would just say too, I met a woman who does that for M A S B at the conference this weekend, and she seems fantastic.
Okay, so good to know.
Potential person.
To be continued.
Excellent.
Let's see here. Um I am sharing with the board again and um assistant superintendent Bailey will bring this forward in November. There is an insulin litigation um that a number of districts are opting into regarding insulin prices and its impact on our insurance costs. Uh for employees in the district. So um similar to some other um class action type, it's not a class action, but type of lawsuits. Um there is a a firm that's um recommending that. Um districts look to opt in to that, no cost to the district to do so and um. Our, I believe our insurance company is recommending we look into it as well. So that doesn't, the board does need to take action by November twenty seventh if we want to opt in. So we'll provide some more information, just forecasting it for you for discussion in November. Uh we continue to um pursue a new um. Uh digital communications person after Michaela's departure. I want to thank Matt Walinga, who's in the back today. Who's from our median tech department, who um offered to work some extra hours tonight to fill in and find some temporary coverage. And certainly uh to Shannon for working on trying to find coverage for our other events. Across the district, as you can imagine, there's quite a demand for streaming our activities that are coming up, so that is posted. If you have interest, please visit our website. Um Meridian Township drafted a memory memorandum of understanding regarding our senior center relationship. As we don't currently have a signed agreement, uh we're reviewing that draft. Um and we'll bring our best thinking for consideration to the board once we have some thoughts about. How that relationship is going to look um probably for the next four years before um Chipewa is no more. I am sitting on the Meridian Township Task Force to find a new location for the senior and or community center. Uh at the township, we met last Tuesday evening and the township has um narrowed down the future senior and or community center to two non district sites. Uh one uh potentially the driving range on Grand River, which is that lot is for sale. And then the township owns some space behind the firehouse on Central Park Drive. Um that could be um made into a senior and or community center. So it does not look like at this time that Oakmoss Schools will be hosting a senior center past that um Chipewa demolition and reconstruction. But we'll keep you posted on that task force as it continues. In terms of points of pride, we do have a state golf champion to celebrate. Alina Lee uh was a state golf champion for the Oakmoss Schools. Um this last week and then Coach Dan Stoltz was um nominated and received an official induction into the National High School Coaches Hall of Fame. So that's quite an honor uh to be in inducted in the National High School Hall of Fame. Uh Coach Stoltz has been um certainly a legendary leader here over many, many years and many major sports. Impacting many uh students and currently a golf coach for us, so congratulations to Coach Stoltz. And we certainly are proud of him and the impact he's had on Oakmoss Schools and student athletes for a long, long time. And then in terms of um Kinoa, so I've been reflecting on the Kinoa um situation from the last week and a half or so. And wanted to just um provide some lessons learned and some um next steps and feedback for the board and community to chat about. So um of course, as the uh. Uh learner um in Oakmoss Schools, as the superintendent need to be a learner. And look at our learning institution and reflect on what we did, how we can learn and how we can grow from it. So the first thing I I would want the board and trustees to understand that we understand is that that fear of school violence is real. Our parents and kids are afraid when they presume that there's a threat. Uh even if that threat is not substantiated, it's very unsettling to say the least. So that fear is real in our parents and our kids, and our parents, of course, are sending us their most trusted. Excuse my um terminology, but possessions are kids, they're babies who they love. So um I understand how it feels when you don't feel your child is safe or you're wondering about their safety. And I also know our parents are operating in a context socially where they've seen school shootings. They've seen in the news, this school didn't check her backpack and they should have. You know, you've seen missteps by other districts and that creates, of course, a mistrust of how is our district going to handle this? Okay, um and every parent wants an ironclad guarantee, my kid's going to be sent home and they're going to come home safe from school every day. And and I understand that as superintendent. So one thing we need to do better as a district, and we're uh attempting to do this, is do a better job telling our story. Our parents need to know what are the all the measures we're taking that we can share in terms of our approach to safety and security. The more education we can do of our parents and community, I think the more trust we're going to earn. And the more transparency there there is in our approach, because we've done a lot of work. And I'm going to list it here, but it doesn't matter that that work is done if you don't know about it, okay? It doesn't make you feel better if you don't know. So um we are working hard to make sure we have good systems in place to keep kids safe. As I mentioned at our last couple of meetings, we have a community forum. Um in regards to our safety and security, that'll be held tomorrow night, seven to eight thirty, we'll we'll go in more depth on this. And take questions from the community and one of our reflections is maybe we do one of those every year. To kind of start to build that capacity of understanding what our procedures are and our processes are. So parents can come and over time, they learn what we're doing in a in a very interactive uh interactive format. Um we have um updated our website to to reflect. You know, some of the board's actions with safe storage, with our behavior threat assessment process, um sent letters to families. But parents want to know specifically, what are you going to do in this situation when it happens? And there's a craving for communications that will bring comfort to that fear, okay? And I understand, um and I think our parents understand, there's some things we can share and there's some things we can't share in terms of FERPA and what's protected with kids. But if parents understand our process better and what we do in a typical process, I think that will alleviate a lot of the. Wanting to know things that you may or may not be able to know um about a child, about a child's potential, you know, punishment. About how we handle um those situations with law enforcement and with our security director and our threat assessment teams. So one thing we've learned in Oakmoss is to rely on the experts to teach us. And I want our parents and community to hear that this is not um a bunch of educators trying to figure out how to do the best job at security. We know we're educators, we're good at teaching and learning, we're not security experts. So the board, again, we hired secure education consultants back in twenty twenty two, thank you. Um to help us uh do with do assessments of all our procedures, assessments of all our properties and make recommendations to us. One of the things they recommended to us was the hardening of school and those things you see. Locks, cameras, and things of that nature, but they also recommended to us back in twenty twenty two. Come up with proactive measures so you don't have to use the hardening things. So we asked them, who's the best nationally with this, and we got a referral to Dr. Margaret Coggins in Virginia, Washington, D.C. To help us put together a behavior threat assessment process. So we've been working since twenty twenty two on that and we have threat assessment teams in every building. Um that are that when a threat comes up, have a really um research based process to go through to make sure we vet those in a uh very systemic way. Uh we've had Meridian Township in uh as well. We've had the S R O conversation with our community, uh but then decided to go a little broader in terms of that approach to um. Become a member of Shield, which is a uh organization within S E C that really provides schools with onsite supervision. Uh and work through our Director of Safety and Security, is actually not our employee, it's an employee of Secure Education Consultants that helps uh lead us. Um and again, they have a law enforcement and school safety background. And then in this last year, we also applied for and what were one of the first, I think, four schools in mid Michigan to be selected to prevent, to protect. And there's a few more schools now, but that's a uh collaboration with M S U uh to help support kids that might be high risk towards um uh school violence. So we're really pleased with being a kind of a introductory member into that. And then just this last week, Meridian Township contacted us that um they have a position filled to uh refill our school liaison officer. Um so that's an officer that's assigned to the schools that pops in and out of the schools. Um it's not an S R O, it's a liaison officer that can be dispatched to other calls if they come up, but it's been a very successful approach. Rest in the past, uh we had one as recently as twenty twenty three um um in our schools as well. Um you know, the board in addition, we've run the Protect the Pack events three years strong and the board's taken safe gun storage resolutions. As well, which is very proactive because that's not required by law. But again, does all that matter to you if you're a Kinoa parent and you don't know it? And you're worried about the safety of your kid? And the answer is no, doesn't matter. So we got to educate and do a better job educating. So um. Those actions will help prevent us, prepare and help us react, and they build trust, but only if people know about them. So uh that's a reflection for us and something we're going to look at uh doing a better job on um with our community. Uh the second thing is, you know, what to expect in communications. So um you know, I know a number of communications went out to Kinoa and. You know, the first communication that went out was only sent to sixth grade and in retrospect, we missed the mark on that. We should have sent it out to the whole school. We try to target those communications to the community that might be impacted or know and not try to create um. Uh overshare um for those that may not know about it, if they don't need to know about it, or those that can't take an action that um as a result, okay? So in this um case, you know, we tried to target, we thought this was limited in scope to a particular classroom or grade level and we were wrong. So we take responsibility for that. Um we have done that successfully in the past, kind of target those communications, but. That's something we're reflecting on. Our communications always try to be very intentional on what we share and how we share it, who we share it with. And that's a tough needle of thread sometimes. Um we even had people from other schools asking, why didn't you share it with us? And the the pushback there is, you know, want to know versus need to know. And um we. Think you need to know if you can take an action as a result that might be in the best interest of your child. So does a Cornell parent need to know about something that's a Kinoa issue? Uh when the Cornell parent doesn't need to take any action because it's a Kinoa concern, okay, for example. So we tried to be, tried to be pretty um intentional about that, not to overshare with the community and upset the community about things that may not pertain to their school. I also know parents need some education on FERPA and what we can and can't share. Because again, scared parents are very well intentioned, scared kids very well intentioned, you want to know everything about the situation, you want to know the kid's name. You want to know what's going on with this kid, what's the history of this kid, are they in school or not, what's their discipline? Uh what's their home life like? Do they have access to weapons, like all those things you want to know so you can make the best decision for your child and family? And some of those things we can't share with you because they're protected. And that's frustrating um for parents, but we can't share information about your child with other parents either. So again, I think bringing more understanding to the processes we use and what we do in a typical situation. Will bring hopefully some more comfort and trust to that fear that um our our parents and students had. Um we also heard um from parents that, hey, we wanted the school to do more. Um and this is uh some fair feedback, just in terms of setting us up for success to have conversations with our kids. Or what conversations are you going to be having with our kids at school so they feel comfortable being there? And that's a great reflection for us, that's a that's a um strategy we've used in the past and can certainly use is. You know, we give talking points to our teachers and our teachers can spread the same message throughout school, so all kids are hearing the same thing. Well, we tell our parents, please talk to your child about A, B, and C before you come to school, we've done that in the past too, so I think that is very, very fair feedback. Um my feedback for the community would be to encourage you to reach out to official sources. Um we do have um parents getting information on Facebook. And um that is not a reliable source, a lot of misinformation, a lot of inflammatory discussion there. Um and things that just weren't helping us um. Um and things that just weren't helping us um helping us either resolve the situation quickly, it was slowing us down. Or wasn't helping us foster that mutual understanding. Um of the facts or that common messaging that our community needs to kind of help calm students. So um it didn't promote trust of the administration or teachers. And again, I'm not saying that in isolation of all the other learnings that I've shared with you this evening, I know those go hand in hand. But I would please encourage our parents to understand, certainly you have the right to post things on Facebook, you have First Amendment rights to free speech. Uh but I urge you to understand that those comments don't come without um some responsibility and consequence. Especially if you're not sure of the facts. Um they impacted our staff, they impacted our culture and our environment. And um I think created to a feeling uh with everything else of not feeling safe at school. So um there were things posted on there that were just blatantly untrue, like that we've cut out all the security in the new buildings. Uh which is not true, we've spent a lot of money on security in our buildings, new vestibules just opening at High Wata and the high school. And um our new buildings are going to have state-of-the-art security, so. I do want to encourage parents to engage with us in respectful dialogue. And I understand at the end of the day that trust is earned and not given, especially when it comes to safety of your kids. And as I try to articulate at Parent Council that, parents, you're the ultimate decision maker whether or not you send your child to school that day. Just like with a snow day, if I say, I think it's safe to have school and you say, gosh, I got a ninth grader or a tenth grader or a new driver, I'm not putting them on the road today because I think it's icy out. I support you in making that decision. I support you in keeping your child home if you think we've made the wrong call, okay? And that's not a criticism of our parents, I know that's a burden on parents, but I also want to encourage parents to make the choice that they think is in their child's best interest at the end of the day. So I say that very uh very respectfully, uh knowing ultimately these are the kiddos you love. Um they're the kiddos that I'm charged with caring for, but um I defer to you as parents to make that ultimate ultimate decision if you don't think we're in the right in the right space on that. So just again, want to share some learnings, uh want to invite our community in uh to have a respectful uh discussion tomorrow night where we can share the learnings. Uh and here's some of the feedback and answers some of the questions. Um and um to be collaborative in that approach. And to make sure we're not um throwing administrators who are trying to do their best under the table and not talking about myself. Uh I have a lot of trust in, you know, Principal Sterling and Assistant Principal Roland and our security team. Uh to try to do the right thing and to learn when we um when uh parents are confused by communication or when we can reflect and do a little bit more, so. Um just a call for some um clarity on what we've learned. And an ask from parents to uh be careful of what you read on social media because it is um not a great source for accurate information. And with that, I'll take any questions from our trustees.
Thank you Superintendent. Open it up, um yes, Trustee Kevin.
Uh thanks for that, uh Superintendent Hood, I would follow that up and maybe a little more forcefully say, a lot of this stuff on social media inflamed the situation and made it worse. I saw so many comments that were, as you said, completely wrong, like there's no fact. I saw some comments saying, well, Hood must be lying because my eleven-year-old said this. I think we all need to get back to this idea that you trust, trust in the authorities, the experts, you know, we're trusting our security experts. It did not help matters. And I think we all, all of us need to, parents, staff, uh teachers, we need to we teach our kids rumor, you know, sources that can be trusted. I think social media is maybe not the source to trust when you have, you know, the authority from school who knows what's going on when they're saying one thing. It made it worse when parents were not believing that. And in some ways, I think maybe our parents, I I understand being scared, I get it, my kids are in this district too. But going back, we're teaching our kids not to believe rumors and not spreading rumors. And I think maybe our adults need to take that lesson to heart as well. So I'm hoping going forward, things, you know, we don't have another situation, but if we do, I really hope parents can pull back a little and try to use some calm on that.
Yeah, I'm thank you for that, I um never enjoy when my integrity is questioned, I try to be a man of honor and integrity. There is nothing in my best interest of hiding potential theft from our parents. There's nothing good that can happen to the school. By doing that, there's nothing good that can happen to me. Uh there's nothing good that would happen to students or the outcome for the district, so um there's no um reason for us to hide. Um any information that we have that if we have a credible threat, that people would know and school could be canceled that day. Um and that's why we have worked on a process that's not one person dependent. With our threat assessment process, it's a team, social workers, counselors, behavior specialists, principals, security expert. Um Dr. Coggins, if we need her as well to help us, because you know, we can't be wrong, you know, we don't ever want to be wrong when it comes to that. Um and as much as I'd like an ironclad guarantee that there's nobody that's under schools, I can't give that, but what I can do is try to do everything in my power to put together a positive environment and good processes, led by experts that are going to make us a model for other districts. Um to follow in terms of our practices.
I'm just, I'm very, I'm looking forward to tomorrow's uh presentation, which turns out to be a very timely, you know, event that we're having it now. Um and I will say, you know, we we have communicated these things, unfortunately, you know, I understand. We've talked about these things at the board table a lot of new security, we've talked about behavioral threat assessment, we've talked about Director of Security and Safety. Um and I understand it's a lot on families to have to be paying attention to what happens at our meetings. So um Yep, so I'm very happy that we're doing one more way of having it all in one place and I'm excited about this idea of doing it at the beginning of the school year every year going forward. Just to get the info info out, so thank you.
I want to add something, sorry, just one second, I just want to add one thing. I I want to reassure the public and the families. I'm someone who is trained in behavioral threat assessments. Um I work in this field and I've understood the workings of what the district has taken on to be safe and proactive and identifying risk. And mitigating risk and I can tell you the process in which this is done is the model that is being taught across the United States. We are amongst the leaders in the United States for identifying risk and mitigating it. And one person who helped lead this charge before we had a Director of Safety and Security was Principal Sterling. He was at the forefront of all of our safety initiatives, conversations. And taught others in the district what to do, how to do it and how to implement it in their buildings. So if anyone had my utmost confidence in handling a situation that was of this risk. It would have been him, not that we're not all, we're not confident in everybody, but just to assure you, he would have been my go-to, he would have been the one I would have called to say, Principal Sterling, help us with this situation, we need your your wisdom. So I know it's frightening, I know it's it's something that makes all of us not sleep at night. When we think about stuff like this going on in our country on such a regular basis, but the Kinoa staff may have had some missteps in their communication. But I guarantee the process is sound. And what they were doing behind the scenes was not going to put anyone in any intentional risk or danger. It was being done exactly how they've been taught and trained. And I I really want to commend our district and our Kinoa staff in understanding how that works, what needed to happen and being able to execute those steps efficiently because they really, really do have all the tools and I I know that they were following all of those measures and steps accordingly. So I just want to say that from my perspective, I have a different lens on this and I promise you that I have full confidence in how they handled the process. As a parent, there may be different reactions as to how the information was conveyed, but that's a separate issue. I'm talking about the fidelity of the process and it definitely should give you some comfort as a community member, parent, a staff member that it is of the highest quality and fidelity.
If I may correct one or clarify one thing, um I do want to make sure the community is aware that whenever our principal sent out a communication about security. Um you could put my name at the bottom instead of theirs, okay? Uh we, they don't send that out in isolation of working with me or with uh Katie Deal or our security team, so um that is my ultimate responsibility and I work in concert with those principals, so. Um I would not say that there was a Kinoa misstep in that, I would say the district tried to target a communication that we co-wrote with with Principal Sterling, myself included. And again, we um, the impact was broader than we originally thought, so. Um so that's on me, not on um not on uh Principal Sterling.
Real quick, uh President Jabar, you said a lot of what I would have said um from the um where we're at and from a security standpoint and that, I'd like to point out, we're we're such a leader in this space, we were just this past weekend. Our district was invited to present to school board members, superintendents from across the state on our security practices and how we're really a model. Statewide and nationally in this space, so I think our community can re- rest assured that we're doing the best job we can on this. Um one other thing about the the security thing tomorrow, the security presentation tomorrow, I want to make sure everyone understands. This wasn't in reaction to Kinoa, this had been planned um well before that. And if you don't believe this, you can look at the last board meeting where it was discussed. Um where um so it just happens to be very timely, so I just want everyone to understand this was not a reactionary thing. Um this security presentation was planned before that to help inform the community, so I really hope that people who have questions um about the process, um tomorrow we'll be able to dive a lot deeper into it and really kind of, you know, get more clear answers, what we can share, right? Um but I, that's a great opportunity for the community and I hope everyone who has has the time and interest is able to attend.
Yes, Trustee Taylor.
So, a couple of things, thank you for the reflections Superintendent Hood. I will personally say that I do think you took on a little bit more responsibility than maybe was required. Um but reflections are always, are always great and learnings are always, we're we're learners, right, we're learners for life. And the reason why I say that is is just because it it takes us all and it takes, it takes our community. Also, and you know, there was, there was, I'm hoping that our community can also reflect. I hope our community can also do the same type of learning and self-reflection. And recognize how perhaps maybe, you know, actions could have been different on the community's part and their reactions and 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 particularly, I mean, we all know that social media is just a bear. And a lot of negative things happen with social media, but that's another conversation, but but one thing that that it, I think we've talked about before with uh and maybe with moving our um with how we do our recordings of our school board meetings. Like Trustee Kevin I had mentioned, a lot of these things have been talked about in many previous board meetings. And it's really hard to find the information in a board meeting. And perhaps maybe there's a way to really bookmark, so if you are somebody that is really, I mean, we're all concerned about security and safety. But if you really are looking for certain information in our school board meetings, obviously you have your agendas. But if you want to hear the rich discussion, if there's a way in our in our board meetings for the community easily find where that might be in the school, in the meeting, so they can easily access it, that I think that would be really helpful. I mean, we had Dr. Um Coggins in a meeting presenting to us when we first started the behavioral threat assessments with her. Very helpful, Jason Russell's been at school board meetings. And not even just um the last board meeting, I'm talking about the forum tomorrow, I think for quite a while as a board, we've been pushing and discussing, really trying to do something more like that and sharing with our community what um some of those more in-depth processes are that we're doing. However, like you said, with what we can share. I mean, there are also things that for the integrity of the process and the integrity of our safety, we can't share everything. And like you said, that need to know versus want to know. And we're not always as a community entitled to know everything. We're just not, and that's one of the things with social media, we think for some reason, because we can go to Google and get answers to every question we ever want to know anytime, whether it's true or not. That we're entitled to that information. And I just wish as a community that would really learn that we're not. There are times when it's really a need-to-know basis for bigger reasons. And it's really hard, especially when we're talking about the security of our our kids and it can be scary. It's definitely scary, not can be, but it is scary. And so the, all of that to be, I would really like to see a really, an easier way for our community members to watch a school board meeting for what they really wanted to see and hear. Um I think that would be really helpful because we've talked about it so much, but it's a huge task to expect our community members to sift through three or four-hour meetings to find the one nugget of information that they're looking for in that one meeting from six months ago. That that is asking a lot, so. And I don't know if it's something that our communications team can try to work on in the in the coming year, um but um that is a, I think that would make life a lot easier for our community.
Just a quick question, are we recording the presentation tomorrow?
Our intent was to try to record, but with our um being in between positions and there being an orchestra concert, the orchestra concert is being recorded, but this unfortunately is not. Uh our intent is again to um maybe try to do it every year so we can record and post, but we didn't have a video core available to record. We reached out to other districts as well, so.
Thank you.
So perhaps um there can be some type of follow-up with some highlights shared with community.
Okay.
And we will move on, um at this time in the meeting, citizens have an opportunity to address the board regarding items of interest that may or may not be a part of this evening's agenda. Citizens are required to limit comments to three minutes, except when this requirement is waived by the board president during the meeting. A designated timekeeper will communicate to the individual who is addressing the board at three minutes. The board highly values public comment and input. However, the board meeting format is designed to facilitate the evening's agenda and therefore restricts board members from engaging in conversation with speakers. Or immediately responding to questions. Questions and concerns may be addressed by the board later in the agenda and may be assigned for follow-up by the board or superintendent at a later date. I have one blue card, do we have any others in the box? Then first up, we will hear from Nicholas Dom. If you step up to the podium, please, and state your name and address. Thank you.
Thank you, my name is Nicholas Dom, my emphasis is twenty-two oh nine, Yvanna Drive, Lansing, Michigan. I thank the board for listening to my comments and also for the reassurances of the board regarding the security incident at Kinoa, that's mainly what my comments are about. Um I just wanted to address something that, you know, Superintendent Hood and the rest of the board reiterated about um you you know, the policies and procedures that are in place, I appreciate those reassurances. I think um it's unfortunate, but the reality is that despite the best policies and procedures, sometimes things get missed, right, we've heard this in Oxford, we've heard this in Parkland, we've heard this Columbine and so on and so on. And so I think that generates, you know, some of the reaction from the parent base. So I wouldn't necessarily take that as a comment on your integrity. Or um the concern that the board or the community in general has. But when it comes down to, am I going to trust the official information? Or am I going to play it safe? Personally, as a parent, I'm going to play it safe, no comment on, that's not a detraction from anything that the board intends to do, so I appreciate all that. Um my comment is just that, or question, I guess, is that um within the limitations of what can be discussed um concerning privacy rights, going forward. If a student displays previous aggressive behavior or class disruptions or behavioral challenges in general, is that sort of evaluated as you're evaluating risk threat for things specifically related to school violence and shootings? Thank you.
Thank you. We have no other in-person speakers, do we have anyone online?
We do not.
We do not, okay. Then we will move on to board reports and requests.
Then we will move on to board reports and requests. And, um, I will acknowledge receipt of correspondence since our last meeting. We heard from Chris Davis and Michael Callahan regarding the Kenowa safety and security. We also heard from Michelle Ott regarding the red cedar basketball program. And now I will open it up to any board members who have any reports they'd like to give or, um, requests or asks. Yes, trustee Kavanaugh.
Uh, thank you. So I was one of the trustees who attended the M A S B conference this past weekend with, uh, trustee Buffett, trustee Phelps. And it was a great conference. Um, I attended a couple of sessions. Um, one was on cell phone policy and I got to say, we are doing great. Lots of districts were just coming up to the idea that they needed cell phone policies. So I was impressed, uh, I was actually surprised that we were, not that we were ahead, but that not everybody was at the same level. So I was, that was good to hear. Um, and Andy and I both attended a great session on onboarding new board members. And we both, I think we took a lot away and we are, I'm willing to help get our new people set. This, uh, district had, like, you would not believe what this district did. They loaded everybody up on a bus and drove them around to the schools to meet everybody.
Are you going to do that?
I know, I'm driving the bus. I'll pick you all up. Um, it was great though. So we have a checklist that they use. And we're hoping that we can go through that and, um. Get our new people ready to go. Uh, there was a great session on legislative updates. So, um. Jamie and our advocacy committee, it's meet and discuss some of that. Um, I did want to point out too, as we were walking around with our badges. Uh, trustee Phelps had a very special ribbon on his.
Yes.
And I believe that you are level three, the award of distinction that you've taken so many board. I looked at it and had to write it down. That he's taken so many credits and so many classes. Um, so he is moving right up. I mean, the people that were getting like the president's awards have been there for like fifty years. So Andy's heading there. I was impressed.
Thank you.
So good for Andy, the most educated board member here. Um, I don't know if that's true.
No, it's not.
Um, and then, I don't know who said it, but that we were fortunate to present, um, superintendent Hood, Jason Russell. Director Deal and I presented and Shannon, thank you so much for your help on that. Uh, so that was really exciting. We had a good turnout to our session. Um, lots of good discussion on school security and who owns security. So that was really nice. And then we invited our, our start time committee. Ad hoc committee, it's trustee Buffett, trustee Taylor, John, me. Um, we had invited all of the countywide, all the Ingham County. Boards who are going to be there to have a little conversation, just to chat, to see what everybody's doing about start times. And if anybody has thought about it. And trustee Buffett, you want to talk about it? We had a great turnout. We had great interest. This is something I think that we could get movement on countywide. Do you want to?
I'm sure, yeah, that we had, um, seven other trustees from four other districts. Um, it was just a rich discussion on a Friday afternoon, early evening. Um, and a lot of, uh, interest and good ideas about moving forward. Um, I'll be sharing some of the things that I S O A. Um, and we shared with them, uh, we have set up, uh, two, uh, a couple of, uh, dates. One is really focused on other trustees, superintendents and athletic directors. Um, that is going to be held in January, it's twenty-third, I think. I'm still looking for a location, I believe. Um, and then the other one is, is coming up. It's more of a community wellness series event and that's on November nineteenth. From seven to eight. And I'm sure there'll be a community coming out. Um, but a lot of interest, uh, with them, we've already followed up them. And, um, they look forward to kind of working with us, um, on this issue.
It was exciting. Like I walked out of there like this is a good school board day, you know, after not the best school board week and then like, oh, right. So that's good.
Thank you for going to those. Anyone else?
Trustee Kavanaugh had the lion's share of the M A S B conference, which was awesome. It was a great event, great speakers. Um, a, a couple of additional takeaways. I just wanted to let the board know. One thing, um. That I found really interesting, um, was, uh, a presentation that I had on interest-based bargaining. Um, with our employee groups and that's something I, I, I think that's worth exploring because it seems like a really collaborative process. And, you know, something maybe we could, uh, we could explore. So some other districts have had some real good luck with that. So. I'm just putting that out there that that might be something worth looking at here because I know it's kind of the, coming up into that, 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 that season here for us. So maybe that's something worth exploring. But otherwise it was a great pro, uh, great, uh, a great event. And just. Thank you, K. You didn't have to bring that up about my award and literally no one cares. It's, it's okay. But I would just say, I really encourage board members to take classes. Uh, they're extremely valuable. Um, we ask our teachers, we ask our students to continue to learn and I think it's some coming on us to, to put that same effort in to become better school board members. So it's been valuable to me and I hope, uh, hope it's valuable, valuable to everyone here too as well. So thank you.
Very well said.
And if may, I may just dovetail onto that, that is, uh, when director Martinez talks about mutual gains, uh, interest bargaining. That is the approach we're looking at engaging with, with our bargaining units this, this year. So we're very excited about that. So I'm glad you can add some expertise.
And it was amazing. Yeah. I was, it was a game changer when I was in there because I've been part of bargain time where we did not do that. And then this seems like a totally new approach and a, and, and, and approach in a positive direction. Um, one thing I would say is the presentation wasn't just the board members presenting. They had the UNISERV directors. They had the union leaders who were also there presenting to us, talking about how valuable it was, which was, you know, that collaborative approach was inspiring. So I'm glad to hear we're headed in that direction. That, that makes me happy. So thanks.
Great. Anyone else? Um, I will report that the executive committee met this morning. Um, I left my notes at home, so I'm going to. Feels like four days ago, doesn't it? And I didn't bring my notes, but we discussed, um, meetings moving forward with, um, work sessions. And, um, the board calendar of desired presentations and work sessions. Working together with administration, planning, um, strategically, what work sessions we have. When we have them so that they apply to things that we need to make sure we do throughout the year. Um, such as, you know, would budgeting need to come up at this time or would, you know, planning for this come up at this time? We're talking about having, um, a work session on the strategic planning process with M A S B. As one of our work sessions in February, maybe just to align with, you know, where we're projecting to go. We set up a ongoing meeting, hopefully every two weeks with the executive committee. And superintendent Hood and assistant superintendent Bailey to, um, collaborate. And talk about what's next, talk about what worked, talk about what didn't. Um, and just provide kind of checkpoints, um, with the planning and scheduling moving forward so that. We're not just having meetings with action items and we're not just having presentations with hours of questions. We're having thoughtful work sessions with thoughtful conversation and meetings that get action items done. Uh, but not trying to do everything all in one night so that everybody goes home exhausted. Um, did I miss anything?
No, I think that was great. The, the one thing I would say and just kind of the project for board members, this is a, I don't want to say moving target, but well, this is something we're working towards. Um, it's not something that's just going to happen, boom, December, you know, we're kind of moving in this direction. Um, and I think positively, I mean, we have some good planning coming up forward, but there may be times, some months that it's not possible. We don't have a work session. We have two action items meetings. So this is kind of something we're heading towards and I think there, there was a lot of great discussion. Um, I think will be a good thing going, moving forward. So thank you.
And it'll be designed at the need and will of the board.
Yeah.
Right? Not just, it's a planned calendar. It's a, we really need to have this. We want to talk about that. However, the board is wanting that direction to go is how things can be done. It's just more thoughtful and more proactive. Yes.
Oh, I'm so glad to hear this kind of, uh, executive committee getting off the ground. I think our work will be better for it. So thank you all. Um, and in this one tie-in, if I, if I remember correct, in some, in terms of some of the work sessions, you talked about. Actually, some board meeting time dedicated to kind of fleshing out not just the topics. But kind of what would be part of that work session.
Absolutely. Yeah, that will be on an agenda and will, will provide lots of opportunity. Yes.
I think January was the first one we were trying to schedule, when we have our new slate of board members on, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Correct. So that they can be part of that process too. Yeah, trustee Taylor.
I just want to commend and thank all of my fellow trustees. I feel like right now is a great opportunity to just. I feel like in the last couple of months, we have really rolled up our sleeves to also work on. The board as a whole and how the board is functioning. And we've been talking about that my entire time here. And it's really refreshing to see that we've actually done something with that and it hasn't just been hours of meetings with, no, I feel like. It's been hours of meetings and workshops that we haven't quite figured out how to turn into action. And it seems like in the last couple of months, we've really gotten into the groove to figure out what that action can look like. To, um, really work on us as a board too and how we're functioning. So thank you to all of my fellow trustees. That's great work.
You can go home now.
Definitely. We have quite the agenda left. Yeah. So I'm going to move a little bit quicker here. Do we have any other board member? Reports or requests? Okay. Then I'm going to talk fast and we're going to get through the, uh, action items. Within the action items, there is a consent agenda. Is it the will of any board member to remove anything from the consent agenda? Seeing none, then I will ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda, please.
Move that the board approve items one and two for new implementation and appropriate action. Item one, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of October fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. And item two, approval of the minutes of the executive session meeting of October fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
So move by trustee Buffett, supported by trustee Kavanaugh. All those in favor respond by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. And the motion passes. Up next, we have an emergency facilities purchase. Uh, we heard about this at our last meeting from director Lieber. Can I have a motion, please?
I move that the board authorize a superintendent proceed with the high school bathroom repair and renovation projects funded by the building and site sinking fund. Twenty twenty-two bond and insurance in an amount not to exceed six hundred and five thousand dollars.
Support. By trustee Phelps, supported by trustee Taylor. And this requires a roll call vote, please, trustee Phelps.
Certainly. Tom Buffett.
Yes.
Katie Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Shulon Doxy.
Yes.
Mary Jabara.
Yes.
Melanie Lynn.
Yes.
Jamie Taylor.
Yes.
I'm a yes.
And the motion passes. Up next, we have a board policy first reading. Can I have a motion, please?
And we've got the board waive the reading and adopt first reading of board policies. Twenty-two oh one, board powers, general powers, twenty-three oh three, violation of board code of ethics. Twenty-four oh one, board member elections, twenty-four oh five, board officers. Twenty-five oh one meetings and twenty-five oh four, public participation at board meetings.
And by trustee Kavanaugh, supported by trustee Doxy. Do we have any questions regarding these policies for our policy committee?
These again are all minor technical revisions, no real change to the meat of the policy. Just adjusted some minor technical language based on some legal requirements. So. Again, that's in the policy revisions document summary for board and community to see as well.
Seeing none, all those in favor respond by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. And the motion passes. Up next, we have a few discussion items. Um, first is the board operating procedures. I'm going to turn that over to trustees Buffett and Phelps.
Yeah. So we finally got to a place after, I don't know how many meetings we've had, months and months of work, meetings with superintendents, meetings with, with, uh, trustee Buffett. Means a lot of work has gone into this document. Um, and we're at a place now where we think it's ready for the board of, uh, education to review. And, uh, kind of give us input. Um, uh, the plan is that we're able to look at this and review and discuss over the next three meetings. Um, with the anticipation of adopting this at our meeting in December, uh, as our board operating procedures. So. Um, that, and when I say that, I, I, I would encourage you to bring, you know, if you see something that's, oh, what about this? Or have there been discussion on that? I can assure you, we have gone through every single line of this document, um, multiple, multiple times. Um, but we may have missed something. So we, I guess what I'm trying to say is, if you have a question, we've probably discussed it before, happy to discuss it again. So trustee Buffett, do you have anything to add there?
Um, I would just add that when we shared this before, one of the comments that we did take to heart was that it was long and replicated policy. And so you'll see links to policy. Um, sometimes it's just a link to policy for a particular, uh, item in there. Sometimes there's a little bit more, uh, development rounding out of what we think we meant by that policy in terms of an operating procedure. So, um, just know that I think it's about six pages shorter, maybe seven.
Yeah.
Um, than it was before. Um, and then the other thing is like, like, for example, the onboarding, uh, session that you went to is like, oh. We have a some language in here, but we just got smarter about that through your involvement in this other workshop. So it makes me think. Maybe there'll be another appendix, maybe there'll be some other language in there. So it's going to be living on some level. Uh, but really invite you, just because we put some time into it, that's not to say that there's, you know, all, uh, feedback are welcome. This should make sense to us. And we do have a goal of, of, um, trying to, um, have it, uh, kind of get in to, uh, pass it sometime in, in December. So.
Okay.
So if I can summarize again, the ask of our trustees is we're going to have this as a recurring discussion item at the next two November meetings. Uh, you can either bring up, uh, questions at the meeting or if you want to, um, get questions to Rihanna, we can share them with the executive planning committee. And then push them out to, um, trustees, uh, Phelps and Buffett. Uh, and then that way we can kind of dedicate some time, uh, to answer any questions and have some rich discussion before action. On December ninth, I think it is.
Yeah.
So you do not want me to start listing my questions that I have here? Do you want to discuss now or hold it? Well, no, I mean.
Sure. I mean, if you just, if you're an hour, the next meeting, so this gives us more time to, to look at it. Yeah.
Well, so I, I don't have a ton here, but, um. So I'm looking at certification and continuing at in our board learning and development. And I know we had kind of talked about this before. But after going to M A S B and Mr. M A, M A S B down there at the end of the table and his fancy medals, ribbons. Um, do we want to require at least CBA one oh one fundamentals of school board? I know we said before, we don't want to require people to do things, but that one seems like, that was even a discussion. At the delegation. Yeah. I mean, even at the meeting though, that was a discussion, the delegation, um, discussed of the whole of M A S B. So I don't know how anybody else feels about that, but.
I don't know if we can require any.
What's the consequence if they don't?
Right. But I think strongly encourage, I mean, as we do our onboarding for new members, but. I just don't know if the. If we have the authority.
Right.
To require any specific, so.
You know, I'd, I'd thought about that because I, I kind of have the same thought and I agree. You can't form, I mean, we're all independently elected. There's no requirement in the law that we take this, you know, as a consequence of our election, right? But maybe we could explore the possibility of, for example, you can't be a board officer unless you've taken CBA one oh one. You know, which is the basic school work class. And maybe that's something, you know, worth looking at. And maybe that's kind of a, a way to balance some of that, right? So I don't know, just a, just a thought to consider. Um, but I, I, I hold your sentiment, trustee Kavanaugh. However, you know, trustee Dox totally appreciate the fact that. I don't know that how, how, what's the enforcement mechanism? There really isn't one. So.
Is there a way instead of like a requirement and enforcing because we are elected? So we also aren't into shaming either, but. How, how, is there a way that we can go about informing the community about how active your school board members are in that regard? I mean, I don't know. I mean, we don't, we can't require per se, but. You know, trustee Phelps, Mr. M A S B, his list is far longer than mine. But I mean, but then that might also get into, you know, you don't want to make a trustee feel bad because they've only taken five classes and not all of them. But. Just kidding. But that's just something to, if we can't require, but I mean, you, you take. You take these courses because you want to be a more informed, better school board trustee, if you want.
Right.
And in the end, you know, if it matters to the community, they can ask their candidates. How involved they are and how furthering their education and what are they doing to be a better school board trustee when it comes time for election? That's really ultimately what it could come down to. So I don't. Know that we can.
Apply to a reelection though.
Yeah.
Because you can't really.
Yeah.
Say I've taken those classes before you become.
That's true. That's true.
I think it could be, eh, maybe an expectation of the board that we would. Expect that you would take this preliminary introductory whatever.
Expect that you would take this preliminary introductory whatever course that teaches you the fundamentals of being a board member. You know, within your first year of service or within your first six months or whatever it is, because. I gotta tell you, if I didn't have that course, we took it in February and I I learned a hundred things. That I did not know. And it was so valuable and I. I would have felt. Nervous to ask questions at a board meeting, being the newbie that were answered for me in that training session. So it it is. Extremely important. It can't be required, but maybe as. Part of our. Operating procedures, it can be an expectation.
Yeah, at least put it in.
Like. Are expected to.
Judgment, it is an expectation that you uh at least take this first course within a certain amount of time, or I don't.
Yeah, just we we wrestle with that language wise and we'll.
Yeah.
iterate.
We can bring that back.
I think it's a great, a great thing to talk. I think it's really helpful and it's helpful to the other board members that. The new board members have some breadth of this. Common language of the procedures of the why are you saying? Yeah, because the manacular is different too, you know, like, why are you saying that? Or how do you know how to make that motion? Or how do you, what does that mean? Or? All those things are relevant once you understand what they mean. If you don't. You just sit there and kind of feel intimidated by the process. You know, I think it's very helpful.
I agree.
We can look at that. On that, on that note, though, about making motions, one thing you'll notice that was added to this that wasn't in the previous version is a. Um an appendix A, which is uh kind of a cheat sheet of Robert's Rules of Order. This is provided, this is not something we created, it was provided by M A S B. So you know, when we're, I think there's been times in the past where like, wait a second, what do we do here in this situation? This is kind of a cheat sheet to that, that hopefully, you know. Answer those questions.
Great. I took a whole class on that and I still need that cheat sheet. I it's. It's overwhelming. I think that book is like this big. So, yeah.
Okay, and one more, I don't have a whole bunch, but um when you're talking about board member responses to the community and maybe I had things on my mind when I.
Trustee, do you mind telling us where you're at in the document so we can?
I am on page fourteen. Um. It is communication and function. A four. Wait, you guys really organized. But it was talking about um. What to do with community members, you know, when community members are re. Are coming to you. Um but I wonder if we want to mention something about social media in there, that social media is not a recognized form of communication. Is that too far? I feel like this past week it came up of. Contacting board members on social media as if we were supposed to respond to them on social media. Which I didn't think was an appropriate way to communicate with us. Or not the official channel, I should say. So I don't know if that's something that we want to, or like, should board members feel obligated if they're called out on social media? I shouldn't say called out, if they are, you know, like, what's the word, engaged on social media? So that's something to think of.
That is something to think about. And I I would say that goes deeper than board members as well. I've seen situations in social media where our staff members are called out and tagged and hey, can you answer this? Or you know, that's not their responsibility for you, them on their personal accounts to go in and answer. Social media issues. I think our community needs to go through the official channel. So to your point, I think it's bigger than just us, and I don't know how to necessarily address that, uh but it's worth exploring, but.
I mean, there there could be a, you know, standard response, which is like, please contact Okumis Board email or, you know, me at. Whatever. So I mean, so it's consistent. We are consistent.
I think that's it too, the consistency.
Yeah.
That we all are kind of doing the same thing. And and it's easy to fall into it when you're just on social media, you know, like as us ourselves of like, okay, I'll just do a quick factual response and then. You're in trouble then.
So are you, are you referring to both? The, are you referring to like the board member responding and engaging?
I think, yes.
Or both ways.
Both, I think, yeah, I mean, and.
This is board operating procedures, so we're not.
Yeah. Tell them what to do.
Yeah.
Might be enough to work, but.
Right. So I don't know, something to think about because. I mean, we saw that. Uh cause it is confusing, I think, you know, as board members, like where where do we respond on only on the official channels of email? Or? And I think guidance as new people are coming on too would help. So. And then he just had one last thing on. Page fifteen, community electronic communications with the board. We have an automated mail response that you guys wrote and I. Do we have that actual wordage currently that goes out? Or would it be once we adopt this? Cause I think.
Once we adopt this, this is slightly different. This is slightly different, but the current one, the sentiment is the same. This is just a little bit more. Detailed.
Yep. Yes, because I like it that you said, you know, that the automatic response would tell them to utilize the point of contact. So I think that's helpful to people. Um and then I think I had the same kind of thing on the website. The same kind of, is it up there yet? But once we adopt this, I guess that's when it goes. But thank you. I know that was a ton of work that the three of you did, so I appreciate it.
Anyone else? Okay.
That's great feedback. I mean, the one thing I would say is please review it. Uh we plan to discuss it next time. I mean, if you have questions, concerns, you know, let's talk through them and then uh I think it'll get us to a better place. So thank you everyone for taking a look.
Can I ask one quick question? So are we um? If we have questions for subsequent meetings, is that something that we're going to be emailing or should we save it? And bring it to the meeting?
Okay, my thought is we bring it to the meeting, we discuss it, and then the next one we can, you know, because trustee Kavanaugh brought some great feedback, we'll discuss and kind of insert that into the new version. You'll have a new version come the next meeting. We can discuss it.
Okay.
You know, that that that's kind of the cadence we're hoping for here.
Okay.
Uh uh may I just um on. Page eleven of the document. The. Procedure for filling a board vacancy is very, very prescriptive. Um so I'm I'm. Um. I I'm wondering if um. What where did we get many of these items that are? In terms of the, I I can see a it kind of process, but these, this is very, very prescriptive. Um so I'm I'm just wondering what what was the source? Of this, uh you know, because I've looked at the board policy and it kind of lays out the. The steps that we would go through. Um. But the, you know, in as. As detailed as no written votes, which I don't even know what that means, wow, no written votes on. It's a dot, so I don't know a bullet item, like one, two, three votes, three bullets from the bottom of the page. Like, that's very, very prescriptive. I I I'm, you know, very detailed. Um and I'm. I'm just wondering where where do we get all of the this information?
I can give you my, you know, my thoughts. So. This document was created as a combination of our discussions along with templates and um from all over the state that other ports have as it relates to board operating procedures. So. Where exactly this one came from, I don't know, but the base template language came from a whole variety of districts from across the state. Um specific to this process, I think some of the reason we had this, so our policy, we do, you're right, we do have a policy of filling this. It doesn't have a lot of meat in terms of process into that. Um the thinking was. Say all of us leave tomorrow and then we report has to come in, they have a process right here, they know how to do that. And what steps they need to take. As it relates to no written votes, the point of that is saying that this is not a ballot situation, because it has to be done in open session. We have to all do a roll call vote in the votes for a new board member. It's not something that can be enclosed session. It's not something we can have a, you know, secret ballot, you know, we all write it down, the president accounts it, it has to be a roll call vote.
By written vote.
That's what that means by that. So it's not, that it has to be wide open um for so for the public to see. So. I I mean, good feedback, right? If it's too prospective, I I we certainly don't want to hamstring us or, you know, tie our hands. However, I think it's important that, I mean. We there's institutional knowledge with members, right? And when members come and go, you know, and we want to have a situ, you know, so we're setting up future boards for success. So if these situations happen, okay, we know where to go here. This is the process we use for them. That's the thinking.
Okay, well, having done a couple of these, filling the vacancies, this um maybe it would have worked. Uh you know, if I would have were, if we were going through each of these steps, it would probably be applicable to maybe one of those instances, but the other of those instances, it would just be very, very prescriptive because. The um there was so much consensus at the beginning, we wouldn't, you know, wouldn't have needed to go through all of this or whatever. So I'm I'm just um. It it just feels very. Very prescriptive. It's what I, you know, I'm.
And I think that was the intention, I mean, so of our thinking when we put this together. I mean, your feedback is noted, but I think we intended to be detailed for that reason.
So, okay.
Go ahead.
No, I would just say that I feel like, like, I want to take a look at this and kind of look at the flexibility therein. And I think that puts us because. I I have not been through a filling a vacancy experience. I really value uh the perspective of those of you who have. So I just, you know. But that's something that I didn't pick up on, I've never been through it. So I think I I'd want to go back and just take a look at that and see if there's some. Balance we can build into it.
I don't, I think trustee Lynn is the only trustee here who's been through that process.
Oh.
I mean, how, is this really far off from what?
This is very, yeah, well, it's just very prescriptive. I mean, clearly, we did not have this kind of uh information, but we. You know, were able to work through it and and something, what is your, you know, how do you feel about the? You know, the candidates who we have to, you know, it was more of a discussion than a procedural. Um and these, this is very pres, again, this is very prescriptive. It this is, so I'm just wondering how um. In terms of operating procedures, I I wonder if. We are, it it is our intention to be as prescriptive as what I'm noting here. And I'm not being critical because I think the document looks wonderful. I think that there is certainly a place for this. I just think that I would think that the purpose would be to um make sure that the reader. Can consume this information and a board member would appreciate, this is what I'm getting myself into in entering into this process, not, you know. Okay, did we do this and did we do that? And it it just feels very, like I said, very prescriptive. Uh and I I'll just me.
Yeah, no, that that that's good feedback. And like I said, I think the thought was to be prospective, because when that happens, that's not a situation that everyone goes through. It's not something that happens every day. Or every week or every term. I mean, it's been how many years since we had the last uh board member opening? But I know some districts, I know I talked to somebody this past weekend, they had three in the last year, you know what I mean? So having that process and understanding. If this happens, this is our process to fill it. You know, to your point, and maybe it's not as easy, maybe you don't have an obvious candidate, you know, maybe you do have to interview people, you know what I mean? There could be, I I don't know what's going to happen, but. For a future board to have the understanding of, oh, hey, we have a process here in place, this is what we should be doing, check these boxes off. I, and you know, whatever that process is, we can look at the details of this. I I do think that would be helpful.
I guess I would ask, because I have never been through that either. I guess when you look at what is laid out here. And you think of the one situation where it wouldn't have applied. From all of these bullet points.
You want me to identify the bullet points that were not?
Well, not necessarily, not 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 necessarily quite that, that specifically, but. I would be interested to know, like, which one or. What is too prescriptive, I guess? Because I don't know, I mean, maybe trustees Phelps and Buffett have a better understanding and can do that, but I would have a hard time looking at these and going, well, that might be too prescriptive because, I don't know, is it?
Um I could look at each of the, there are like twenty five bullet points, so I don't know, I don't want to go through it tonight.
Not tonight, I'm just, it's just a question.
Conversation.
Yeah.
Give some feedback, yeah.
Yeah.
It just, it just feels like a lot of bullet items to make um, yeah. And I'm I'm hoping that the board procedures are not as, you know. What, right?
Yeah, I got you.
Yeah, right. There should be, you know, we're we're reaching consensus. That means seven people discussing and, yeah, and.
Right.
Yeah. And I can tell you as someone who went through. That process, it was a very organic conversation. It wasn't. Well, let's see, did you meet A B? Okay, you're out. Nope, you didn't. Nope. It it was a. Let's talk about this. Let's listen to these people thoughtfully in their responses to the questions we gave them and make a decision together. It wasn't a criteria based. Um type of thing. Overall, it ended in certain criteria, but it was organic in nature. It was more thoughtful, more, more flexible. That's all.
This doesn't, this doesn't have criteria. Yeah, there's no criteria.
I know, but I.
Yeah, but.
Bullets tend to feel like criteria to me. That's all. I'm just using that word.
I mean, one of the things that, you know, our policy does say is the thirty days is is real, right? So just so to to be clear, like, if we don't. Reconstitute our board over in thirty days, then we give that authority to the ISD to, so. Having, again, I I I feel like it's all workable and I want to look at these again and talk to you and see where we can kind of like figure out a healthy balance. Our policy is pretty general, though, I mean, I'll say, it's like, hey, collect some resumes, talk to folks, you know, it'll work out. It doesn't say that much about in terms of a process. So again, I think somewhere in between those two, I think there's some healthy language on that. I'm not worried about it, honestly. A good conversation.
Good.
Um I have a question for the board. This wasn't really part of the agenda, having this conversation right now, not that we should enough. But it does put us close to nine thirty. Do we want to do the book study now or do we want to do it at the next meeting due to the fact that we've? Now reached.
We feel a closed session.
Right, we still have a closed session we have to do. Um I don't want to negate the work that you put in. Cause I know those, really, your questions are very thoughtful. I can tell you put a lot of effort. I don't want to take that away. I would like to just ask if you want to postpone, because we do have.
I think we should.
Another part of the meeting. Okay. Does everybody else agree with that?
I I completely agree with that. I just, one thing on the book, Bill, can we identify the next? Yes. Uh question, Oscar, because right now I don't think anyone has signed up.
Yep, thank you.
It's trustee Lynn, I'm pretty sure.
Let's look at the second.
Let's see, we have. An opening for chapter nine.
The authentic leader.
The authentic leader.
The authentic leader right there.
Pages one eighty three through two oh five. We have a volunteer or do I need a volunteer?
No, I can do it if she she sent. I have, I have not done one. So is that what we do that the next meeting or is it the weekend?
No, so the next meeting, we will do the one we were gonna do tonight. So you will have two meetings from now.
November twenty fifth.
Yeah.
Chapter nine.
Yep. And I'm updating the timeline for everyone here.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Good job, Andy.
Okay.
You're running out of meetings, Melanie.
All right, at this time in the meeting, citizens have the opportunity to address the board regarding items of interest. Um individuals may. At this time be limited to three minutes, but extended at the discretion of the board president. A designated timekeeper will communicate to the individual who is communicate, who is addressing the board at three minutes. The board highly values public comment. However, our meeting format does not allow the board to engage in conversation with speakers. Questions and concerns may be assigned for follow up by the board or the administration at a later date. Do we have any blue cards?
We do not, sorry.
Do we have any online speakers? Okay. Uh then we will move on to our other matters. We have an executive uh session scheduled to discuss the. Uh superintendent's evaluation. Can I have a motion, please?
I move that the board adjourned to executive session pursuant to section H A of the Open Meetings Act for the purpose of discussing the superintendent evaluation. Support.
Move by trustee Kavanaugh, supported by trustee Doxy. This requires a roll call vote, please secretary Phelps.
Tom Buffett?
Yes.
Katie Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Shulon Doxy?
Yes.
Mary Jabara?
Yes.
Melanie Lynn?
Yes.
Jamie Taylor?
Yes.
I'm a yes.
Okay, then the motion passes. Um to our audience, we will move into executive session. We will come back out of executive session into an open meeting. However, there's nothing left on the agenda. So we will adjourn um immediately following. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for being here.
Oh, it's fancy.
So, wow.